...that runs under this corridor. And down there, the air conditioning equipment will sit and will distribute air through the floor up to the first floor area. The attic will have to be strengthened. You'll see these mansard features being rebuilt to give those distinctive Victorian forms. In the background, you see the turrets, and you see the clock tower, which once rose right through the middle of the building and now crowning the new construction. These are interior elevations. This is the wall of what we're calling the double height or two-story courtroom. And as you can see, that's the judge's bench. That space where the district court meets now is really just about this wide because this room originally extended all the way to the outside walls, and it was two stories in height. You know, it's a grand symbol of the importance of justice in America. That's why these courthouses were built. They were trying to establish law and order in South Texas. And so they used architecture as a way of expressing that concern. Now, it's hard for some people to see a two-dimensional drawing. This is a photograph taken inside of the Wharton County courthouse. And you can -- the judge's bench is down here. It's not completed when this photo was taken, but you can see that it's a two-story space. You have a wonderful two-story courtroom there. This is the basement plan. First and foremost, a new foundation will be -- needs to be poured under the entire building. That's a very extensive process. We have to remove the first floor. You have to excavate down to the bottom of the footings. And then, very carefully in small parts, you pour new concrete footings underneath the existing brick walls. This is how you stabilize a building. Now, of course, that's also dependent on removing these wings because we think that there's long-term cracking in the building that's very evident. It's from various sources. One is the movement or the pressures, the stresses that this wing, this addition, that with dry weather drops and with wet weather rises and like a lever puts pressures onto the courthouse itself, which is a masonry building. And so as this concrete solid mass that's three stories tall moves up and down, it pulls on these brick walls and virtually pulls the bricks apart. So that's why the wings need to be removed. And then the new foundation put under there, and then the mechanical rooms put in these areas under the basement, and then the air conditioning and plumbing and all distributed throughout the rest of the building. On the first floor, this is the original front door. It's still what y'all call the front door. The flagpoles are out here and extends back to the staircase which winds up to the top. This floor, we see envisioned as the county court function along with the county officials, the county judge, the staff, and the commissioner's office. There might be some conference rooms for people to use and for the commissioners to use. But the county court, this room in effect, this room and this function would take place on the ground floor of the courthouse. And there would be some small restrooms on this floor, probably more for officials than for the general public. On the second floor, we'll just start there again with the restrooms. There are larger public restrooms, and they occur on the second floor. All of this space here will become the district courtroom. And you'll see, it's a very large and wonderful space. And then this is the jury room with its own restroom. And this is the existing elevator and the existing fire stair. On the third floor, there's already the fire stair and the elevator. And so there are just four small offices there. They would be used by the district clerk to serve the district court. So you can see that a lot of this building has to do with the administration of the district courts and the commissioner's court. And a lot of the other functions have now moved into -- are going to move into your new annex building. So let me just sort of summarize then what really is envisioned on this project. As I said, the removal of the additions, they're putting stress on the rest of the Strengthening of the foundations. Restoration of the exterior of the courthouse would include restoration of all of the brick, the replacement of all of that mortar which is crumbling behind the plaster, repairs to all of this limestone trim that surrounds the windows and creates these horizontal bands, and it creates a cornice along the top of the building. There would be reconstruction of the four pointed turrets that you see in this room. The reconstruction of this mansard feature, this very high pitched roof with the cast iron crestings at the top. The strengthening of the roof and the reframing of the attic as a mechanical area. Actually, the building, you know, will be like five stories tall because there's going to be a basement level, first, second, and third, and then an attic. And so by using the basement and the attic for our mechanical rooms, we can use more of the space on the three major floors for offices and other county functions. Replacement of the clay tile roof with the original slate. Reconstruction of the clock tower, which, as I said, would be the crowning feature and landmark for the county. We're going to be restoring all of the primary historic interior spaces and renovating the secondary historic spaces. And that's a distinction that historic preservation people use because what we try to do is to do an accurate restoration of the public spaces of the building, such as the courtrooms, the hallways, places where people know the building to be. And then minor offices, they can be modified a little more. You can have a little more lowering of ceilings or a fur down for duct work. And so in the end, you work in all of these modern systems, but you do it in a way that follows proper historic preservation procedures. And then finally, the installation of all new contemporary building systems. All new central heat and air, all new electrical systems, all new plumbing systems, all new telephone and data lines, or conduits for all of those, I should say, because those things change so rapidly that the state program will pay for the conduits in the wall, but then the wiring changes, and so that's not always installed by the state. An automatic fire sprinkler system throughout the whole building. So everything will be protected by an automatic sprinkler system. So as I said, this was our plan back in 2007. We presently do have a contract with the county, and that is to do phase one, which is to remove the wings on the west side of the building. And then, because they're going to be gaping holes, once those are removed, we're going to restore that wall of the building. We're going to restore the masonry. We're going to install new windows in all of the original openings, a new west doorway, and we're going to do work at the roof. So that from the new building, you'll have an image, very similar to this, of the historic restored building. And that would be phase one. And our hope would be that after the bond election passes in November, that that work would commence immediately so that that work can continue on into the middle of next Also, in this year, it's time to apply for additional state funds. So by December of this year, the county has to put in a grant application saying, yes, we want to restore the courthouse. We've already submitted our grant previously. We're sticking with that idea that we want to restore the building. And you're going to ask for probably the full match that the county is going -- the THC will allow. And that doesn't mean you're going to get that full match, but probably in the last time we were told to go ahead and submit that. So that may change this fall, but you're going to be asking for more money in December. By January 31st, the state will have made a decision about who's going to get that money and how much. And then you'll have money to match with the bond election funds, and you'll know how much money you can proceed with. That way, with the bond funds and the state funds, none of these funds are coming out of the general fund taxpayer dollars. They're going to be either bond funds, or they're going to be Texas Historical Commission funds. And so what we envision is that we would take some months to work together and to revise these plans, complete these plans, and do whatever month -- you know, if you're able to get enough money that you can do a $5 million project, we'll adjust the plans to do a $5 million project, and then we'll press forward and execute that plan. And so in the next two years, that project is completed, and you apply -- and you have to, you have to apply again in two years for funds, and then you finish up the building, hopefully, in the next phase of work. So that's really -- that's kind of the long-term game plan. But this entering into any kind of a building process, whether it's a church or a county, there's always kind of an act of faith that you have to take the first step and you have to move forward. And I think that's where we are right now, is that it's up to the voters to give the go-ahead. If the voters don't vote, then this whole project is a dead deal. But if they vote, then it's time to move forward, and we can see a restored courthouse in the next three or four years. So I'd like to introduce Mike Boyle. Mike is the contractor on the present phase-one job right now. So he stands ready to start work immediately after the bond election. He's holding his contract. He's not bugging us about walking away from it. He's here. He's saying that he's going to stick with us. Is that right, Mike?
Right. We're excited to get started.
And so that would be the first step. And then Curtis is here in case you have any concerns about this brick. Curtis is, I think, the foremost restoration mason in the state. And I don't know the whole state, but I know he is in South Texas. He's working right now at Pearl Brewery on a building -- buildings that are built out of the same brick, we think. This building can definitely be restored. But if you have any questions, Curtis is here to ask about that.
The judge told me I could ask a couple of questions. You said that the footings for the original courthouse have to be redone?
Reinforced, yes.
And that's that part you said, go by step by step? You got to go by room by room or something and pour concrete?
Yes.
And I guess rebar to connect it into the existing foundation, or how does that work?
It's just a -- footing is a pad that the building floats upon. And so, yes, you excavate a section, and then you excavate usually halfway through the wall, right, Curtis? Have you done that? Halfway through the wall, and you pour this pad of concrete with reinforcing in it. And you do that, you can do that in a pattern so that you're doing more than one at a time. You can space yourself out. You can't do--
So that it doesn't affect the others?
Yes. You keep it as stable as possible as you're doing this, and then you move around the building in this one, two, three pattern.
And why is that necessary for that?
Because it will stabilize the building. Obviously, over the years, there's been a lot of movement in the building. If there was no movement, there would be no cracking. And so the cracking is there because of some kind of movement. And so this will stabilize this so you can be comfortable that you have a strong building that's going to last you another hundred years.
Okay. So if the county decided to keep the wings, what would prevent you from using that stabilization technique on the foundation for the wings as well?
Well, the--
Are you prevented from using that technique to stabilize the wings?
It's a whole other ballpark because they don't have -- they're not the same kind of building. The addition from 1924 is a reinforced concrete building. The courthouse is a masonry building, load-bearing masonry building from 1894. And that's why there's been this discrepancy. They have different foundations.
Load-bearing masonry?
Load-bearing masonry. That is that the only thing holding up that building is one brick stacked on top of another brick stacked on top of another brick, multiple bricks wide. You know, it's not just two or three bricks like a brick veneer. It's a foot of brick lined up in there with mortar in between, and then it's load-bearing.
Right. That's the structure of the courthouse itself. I was asking about the foundation, though.
Well, there are two different foundations. And so you can't treat one with the same--
I'm trying, because we're talking about stabilizing the foundation, right?
Right.
Because this is really important. I'll tell you why in just a minute. So the stabilization of the foundation of the 1894 courthouse is what? What is that consisting of? Is that concrete?
That would be--
Concrete, rebar, reinforced?
Yes.
Okay. And what is the foundation of the wings?
You could do something similar if you wanted to reinforce and preserve the wings of the building. You could get into something extremely involved, but it might cost you $10 million, I'll throw out on the table, to try to do that. Because when you get down, you've got a basement under the concrete building, correct?
Okay.
That means you're another--
You spent a little time in there looking at deed records.
You're down already another few feet, right?
Okay.
What's below that? There's a little bit of dirt, and then there's water.
Right.
And so if you got down low enough to put a foundation under the concrete building, you would be building in a pit of water constantly.
So what we have, we've got core samples or soil material studies that show where this water table is?
We have lots of geotechnical reports that shows where that occurred.
Okay. So then basically what we're doing is we're building like an offshore oil rig type area because we're building in a water table.
Building in a water table, and you're trying to pour concrete into a wet area, it becomes much more complicated--
Right.
--to save 4,000 square feet of space.
Okay. Okay.
Now, we can tear off the 4,000 square feet and save the county a lot of money. And that's really what happened in the mid-'90s.
Well, hold on. And let me -- because the commissioner's court needs to understand this--
Are you -- am I talking to you or am I talking to the commissioner?
Yeah. I'm asking these questions for information here because of the legal -- because legal is facts. You apply a lot of facts, okay? And so the impact of your decisions in this case will have a factual impact on the county you need to be aware of, that the original plans that you designed, you were paid for by combined fees between an initial grant by the Texas Historical Commission and the county. In connection with that original part, there was an easement that was placed on the property that requires the county to maintain that property in its -- in a usable state.
Yes.
That there are -- so under that 2005 easement that the Texas Historical Commission currently possesses in the deed records, there is a duty to preserve this.
Yes.
So ultimately, if the bond issue fails and the county doesn't authorize the restoration to the 1894, there is an arguable legal responsibility of the county to restore this to usable space and have it maintained and available under the 2005 easement that would -- and I don't know what the -- where funding would come from that, but that would be an obligation here. What that would then ultimately decide, because there are some legal questions with the enforceability of that easement, is whether or not the county would have to go into legal fees to dispute the validity of the easement as to whether they have that obligation or not. If that obligation is shown to be invalid, then the entire corner could be razed to the ground if that was what the county decided. But those would be the steps necessary to get to that point, is we'd have to, you know, either start a destruction process and have the Texas Historical Commission sue us to enforce their easement and then fight over it, or we'd have to sue in advance the Texas Historical Commission to invalidate their easement and then take that action there to completely destroy it. Or second step is that if you don't pass the bond to return it to 1894 and the 2005 easement is valid, then you have an obligation to fix it. You still have an obligation to fix it with the wings on as it sits. Or if the bond passes and you approve the restoration, you rip the sides off and you make it an 1894 courthouse. So that's -- people don't -- people seem to forget about the 2005 easement that's in place and whether or not it's enforceable is a legal issue that we can fight about and spend money on, or you can use that in deciding how you want to go about the courthouse restoration. So that's why this is important to the commissioner's court, is that the answer to the question with regard to what you do with this town square is not over whether or not the bond election passes. You still have a legal issue that you have to deal with, which is either restore it to the 2005 requirements, you know, of the easement that was done in 2005, or tear it down or put a fence around it. There's -- you're going to have some other obligations that you have to be aware of. And that's why it's so important, commissioner, is that it's not over just whether or not you do 1894 or not.
George, you're a very good attorney, and I think everybody realizes why you're here. You're here to make money. And if we restore this courthouse, you're not going to make a dime. Now, if we break the contract, we do this, we get in a big legal battle, you're going to make lots of money. So I understand.
Well, let me add something that I was concerned about, and we've talked about this at many occasions, is that the cost of maintaining the building, if we vote, if the voters don't pass the bond election, the cost of maintaining this building will far exceed the $3 million that it will cost our county to restore it. So I don't see how -- and on an ongoing basis, I know that maintaining a restored courthouse will cost less than restoring the courthouse as it exists today. That's a given. So if anyone is concerned about how much money our taxpayers are going to be paying for maintaining a courthouse, you have got to move your thinking toward a restoration if you want to save money. Because there is no way to continue to maintain the building the way it is now with the different foundations pulling apart. We tried to do it, what, eight years ago? They came in, they were not able to do it. They said this can't be repaired.
Well, but he just said it could, but it would cost a whole bunch of money to do so.
Yeah.
And I think that that's one of the problems about misinformation that this county commissioner's court has, is that when you make representations that something can be done and the expert says it can, but it's going to cost a whole lot of money, it's a different opinion.
When--
And that's something that's so important for this court and this county to understand, is that your opinion is it's not the right thing to do.
Because--
And that is very based on good, sound facts about a lot of money being the issue. But that's the concern--
Talking about -- when I said a lot of money, I was talking about the foundation under the addition.
Right. To keep the wings and stabilize those wings, it's going to cost a whole bunch more money to do that.
It'll cost more money to maintain those -- that 4,000 square feet than to just build it new somewhere. Now, we can get those exact figures, but--
But that's an opinion versus what he said, is that you can restore the courthouse and with the wings on there, it's just going to cost a heap throughout--
No, you can't restore the courthouse with the wings on.
Why?
Because that's not the right terminology.
Well, what -- when were the wings put on?
In 1924.
Okay. So you can restore it circa 1924, can't you?
Well, let me ask--
I'm not saying that that's a--
The expert--
--historical commission sanctioned project.
Can I say something?
Yes.
As far as the brick is concerned, you're still beginning -- you're going to have to restructure the wings so it gets off the brick walls, which is going to cost you a lot of money to change the whole system up. But you've got the weight on top, and the brick walls are not designed for that. They're designed to carry their load and carry that courthouse as you see it, but it's not designed to carry a load on that wing. So you're going to have to take the sides of the foundation. You've got to figure out some way to come in structurally, hold them wings up, and get them off that courthouse, and they should not be on there.
So the 1924 renovation was effectively designed?
Yes. There you go. I own money. Perfect.
That's the information that people need to understand as to why are we in this position? Is that in 1924, they attached this in a way that which today's engineering science says is not sound. Right.
Correct.
There's no expansion joints between the additions and the main building. Not only are there no expansion joints, they chipped into the brick walls and cast the concrete columns into the wall to tie them together, and they rested it on the footing of the original building. So it's when we got into this and when we worked on this in the mid-'90s, 2005, '06, '07, when we studied this extensively with that first grant that we got from THC, that's when it all came to the fore that it's impossible or extremely expensive to do that. This is the more economical way, is to restore just the original brick building. And that's what the Texas Historical Commission has money for. That's what they have $5 million or $5 and a quarter million to hand out to you at this point in time. But their interest is historic preservation. They're not a, you know, the judicial commission of Texas, and they're not handing out money just for courthouses. They're handing out money for historic preservation. So they have their rules. And in order for it to be a high-quality exemplary preservation project, then you've got to follow their rules. But it's $5 million that you're going to turn down if you decide not to restore the building.
Right. The money that they are willing to offer for a 1924 renovation is obviously less than an 1894 renovation because they're looking for that original restoration.
Yes. And they're going by--
Right? I mean, that's what we talked about, Ms. Fleming? I mean, that way your point system works? You get more points for going--
Well, but it's not that the funding is pro-rated based on your proposal. It's whether you -- if your score for the proposal that is forwarded is high enough relative to the other applicants to be selected for funding. It's not that you receive less for a different--
It's all or nothing. It could be all or nothing.
It is. I mean, we applied in 2000 to renovate the courthouse. We didn't get any money. We applied in 2002 to renovate the courthouse with the wings, but we didn't get any money because our score didn't go up high enough. Now, you know, in 2009, we applied with a restoration plan, and we got money to do the emergency grant. Why didn't we get more? Because the county needed their share of the money to build the annex. They didn't have enough money to match at that point in time. So now, with the bond election, this gives the match that can allow them to have a full match, and then they can apply for the full restoration.
So and then explain to the court, why is the water table concern for the wings different for the foundation renovation for the original courthouse itself? Does it not have--
Because it's lower. It's lower. The basement is lower. Well, but then you -- but we can work now right there at four or five feet below, six feet below the floor level. We can start working. Or you go over into the basement, then you go down a whole floor, then you start working. So those levels aren't the same. The basement is going to be a little bit lower, and that's when we know we get into the water table.
Yeah. And it's not where the foundation is, but it's where the footings for the basement foundation are. Is that right?
Yes. I think. I understand your question.
That's why the different level?
It's working -- well, no, the -- right now, the courthouse only has a basement in one level, one small space. And it's -- but the basement of the addition is lower than that.
How much lower is that? About 12 foot, 14?
No, it's not -- it's not a lot -- not a lot lower. I mean, it's -- but it's -- but we haven't really studied. We never studied the costs of, you know, trying to put this foundation under the wings because that would -- the game plan changed at that point when we said, okay, there are all these problems, and we got the costs we were getting or the advice we were getting saying, this is an incredibly complex process that you're going to have to go to. And that obviously is going to translate into lots of money. Then we paired that with the fact that we're probably going to stand a better chance to get state money. And so we use those two factors together to say, let's go in a restoration direction.
How long has this water table issue been a problem over?
It looks like it's always been a problem.
So was it a problem in 2002 when we tried to get renovation with the wings?
Well, I mean, the problem is when you start to try to do construction under the building. The water table is just down there. It's right now, it's -- the water table is -- it moves up and down also with how much drought we're having.
So right now, it'd be a good time to do -- because the water table--
Now would be probably a good time to do the work.
The -- is this a potential for overrun cost for the project as well? That if you start working on the foundation requirements and you find out that that water table is a little bit higher, a little bit lower, that -- or the amount of space that you need that you're -- is that an issue?
No. I would like to hear that. I mean, no offense, but I would like to hear that.
Well, that's why we're putting a foundation in the base bid. The base bid will include a fixed price to fix the foundation. It's not a mystery. It's not, oh-oh, we found a foundation problem. We're putting that into the construction document.
So if you find unexpected-- So, did, so if you find unexpected developments in the ground, when you start doing the excavation to do this building, there's no additional cost in your contract for that? And what I mean is the construction cost.
Hey, you know as well as I do that there are always unexpected costs. And when you get into the renovation of a building, there are a cost. You know, that's what I'm saying. That's why this is an act of faith. Do you have, you know, do you have the guts to do this project or not? Maybe y'all don't.
And that's all I'm trying to do, is make sure that the people that make that decision have the information so that they can choose for themselves what they want to do. And that's the issue, is that with the water table being a few feet below on the sides, and the water table being there all there, then could, I guess I'm asking, with your professional judgment, is it reasonable for the county to project a possible additional cost associated with the foundation because of the water table under the old courthouse?
That's why we have a contingency in any estimate that we would do.
Okay, you're not answering my question.
Well, you're asking a leading question.
And if, no, I'm not. I'm asking whether it's reasonable for them to be concerned. And it sounds like it is, because you're saying you're building in a contingency in the contract board.
Well, that's, we are. And, you know, it's every, we could start about the foundation. We can talk about the air conditioning equipment, we can talk about the brick walls, we can talk about the wood roof, all of that's a big, it's a plan. We architects work on plans, you know?
Right, and they're going to have that problem.
It's not something you squeeze water on it, and poof, it develops.
They're going to have that, they're going to have that water problem underneath the original courthouse, whether or not they renovate. It's always going to be there, no matter what they do.
Well, you're not, you don't have, you're making, you're phrasing it into a problem.
He's just trying to get you rattled, that's what it turns into.
You're making it as a, you're making it as a problem right now, isn't it? You said it was a problem.
Ken, I'm sorry. I don't mean, I don't mean to say anything. What I'm asking, what I'm asking...
This is a presentation, isn't it?
Let's talk real quick.
Please.
Just really, really quick, because this is the council, and we have counsel in those arguments. So, let's just, can we take a vote to see if we want George to be asking questions? Because he's asking questions, and James is saying he wants to hear answers, and you're saying no.
I don't mind. I don't mind, because he just said something about, if we got the guts to it. It's not about guts spending taxpayers' money, it's about knowledge. So, I want to hear the knowledge.
You've got one of the best means here to do that.
Well, because we got guts, we're kind of people, how are we representing the county?
But the problem, Mr. Fleming, this is the problem that you need to understand. No, it's not. It's that you have this problem, you have the problem of fixing this building, whether or not you want to guys...
Now, we got a new judge, now you're taking that thing.
That's not the point.
Gentlemen, pardon the judge.
Can we, can we stop the argument and vote to allow whether we want George to talk or not?
This doesn't sound like legal advice to me, I'm sorry.
You can ask questions and we'll address it.
That's what you brought up to the table for, so, I mean...
George, I think I can address this.
Address it, that's what you're here for, sir.
Do you understand my question, what I'm trying to get to?
I do, I do. And as someone that may, probably will want to bid...
We need to understand one thing here today. We're here to get the truth out, nothing but the truth out. We're not here to be misleading, misleading or biased. We don't want misinformation. If anybody's asking questions, this is purely for clarification purposes. And how can you clarify anything? I mean, I want to listen to it all, I want to hear it all.
Everybody knows you're against the project.
That's your opinion, Paul, and you don't have the right to sit up here and insult me every time we're in court and assume what you believe that my beliefs are. I don't ever sit up here and do that to you. Let these people talk and ask questions to each other. They have a right to ask questions, and this gentleman says he has the information, so he can answer.
Okay, let's go.
What is your name, sir?
I'm Mike Boyle.
Coil, I know what you're saying.
I hold the contract for the phase one.
Go ahead, sir.
And we're excited to get started on phase one.
No, no, you're good, you're good, I mean, I don't mean, but I just, I can't hear you.
Is this a microphone wire?
Yes, it is, that's what I'm saying. Come up, we can hear you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I think what your question is, is when you award the contract for the foundation, I guess that would be phase two. Would it, Louis? It will include all the footings. Those footings are already designed, I've seen those plans. I haven't studied those plans, that's not in my contract. But I've seen those plans, the engineers are darn good ones, design the system to go in and underpin that existing building, with what I think of as a backbone that you put under the building, pieces at a time. And then, when you're done, you have a new, complete monolithic backbone or a foundation under that existing old building. I don't know what's under that part, I'm going to tear it down, I'm going to grub up whatever's there and backfill the hole, plant grass there, and I think put a sidewalk up, but look. So, I can't speak to what's under the 20 whatever addition. Now, for unforeseen conditions, there are unforeseen conditions on every remodel job. When we bid this phase two project, we'll include the design of the foundations that have already been designed, you've already paid for that design. We'll also evaluate the geotechnical report. If they show water in that area, we'll assume water's in that area, is the geotechnical report, and we'll include the cost of managing that water in our, in our price. So, when you block down a number in a water contract, that's covered. Doesn't necessarily mean we won't dig down there and find any in graveyard. And if we did, you'd have, you know, the job would have to stop, all of that would have to be mitigated at some cost. But it's not like we, a contractor, would dig down there and say, hey, there's water. You never said anything about water. We know there's water, I'm sure it's in the geotechnical report. It's not, but it is just the geotechnical report that shows it. And then, so there will be, I can't promise you there won't be any unforeseen conditions, but that's not a unforeseen condition, that's a known condition going in. So, we, bidders and contractors will include the cost of managing that during the construction.
Right, and you have to rely on those soil samples and report.
Absolutely.
You know, and if it shows that you have a 10%, if this is the right terminology, forgive me if I'm wrong, if it shows you have a 10% or 20%, you know, water in a table, or, you know, particulate of water in that area, and you get down there and it's 70%, that's one of those things that could change those costs.
That could be, right.
But that water's down there, whether you take money from the Texas Historical Commission to help build it, or whether you fix it without their money, admit? I mean, the concern, this issue, this footing issue...
Yeah, my understanding is it's below, somewhere between the foundation of the 20s addition and the foundation of the original, the bottom of the original foundation.
Right, so whether or not they approved to fix, to restore this to the 1894 area, the county still has to deal with that water with regards to the foundation shifting. And so, they're still going to have some maintenance or repair cost, whether or not they fix this to 1894 or not.
Right.
And that, that's really the point that I'm trying to make, is that if the bond election passes, and they go forward with this project, and they participate in this area, that will be one way to solve this problem. But if it doesn't pass, the county still has a maintenance issue with that building that they have to deal with, and that maintenance is going to be a continuing problem with, until that foundation is stabilized.
I believe that...
And so, I apologize if that was argumentative, how I was trying to get there, but that's exactly...
I believe the engineers think that when we tear off the addition, the old building will somewhat stabilize.
It will remove one of the reasons for movement.
Yeah. But it's going to continue to move, because the original foundation didn't quite right, if you will. None of them are, none of these old buildings have good foundations. They deteriorated, and they probably never were built right.
Yeah, so...
Hold on, hold on a second.
Any commissioners have any other questions?
Well, we're waiting on a tape change so that we can continue.
I see. Curtis, he's our, he's been introduced to the masonry subcontractors. Explain there's a lot of historic work.
Thank you.
He may have some things to add to that, but I think there's been a question about the quality of the brick that he should address, the quality of the existing mortar that he can certainly address. Our scope in phase one, we put the rebuilding, that one endless building will return those three things to the final. And it doesn't get plastered back, it gets finished the way the whole building will in phase, subsequent phases. So, I don't know, Curtis, you have anything to say?
Well, I think it was an issue about, you know, a concern about the brick, the quality of the brick. That brick is used all over South Texas. I can't determine, take it out and see if it's coming out of Gonzales, or it's a huge plant in Calaveras, which is between Coorsville and Elwood, about where I live. And that's where a lot, the majority of these brick, this type of brick was made, and it's still being used. We try to find as much as we can at the Pearl Brewery, but we can constantly store in those buildings, and all the buildings are made out of this type of brick. So, I don't think that the brick is a big issue. We need to repoint the mortar, it's got a lime mortar in it. Back then, they didn't have ported cement, they were going to get ported in here until about 1910, and that was at San Antonio, probably get it down in here till after that. So, it needs to be repointed, that would, you have historical mixes that you stay within the guidelines of what THC, well, in historical buildings, and you put a high lime content, which actually waterproofs the mortar much better than the lime does, and it helps keep water from penetrating through the, through the brick wall. I feel like this brick was similar to what was in Wharton. I mean, ended up making, I had to go, I finally found a guy in Mexico who could make the brick, that matched Wharton because of the red, they made it right off the Colorado River, can't get that. We have access to be able to replace some of the brick. It's going to have to be replaced. Some of the faces ate off when guys plaster stuff, they'll beat the face up so that it adheres to the, to the brick and it tears it up. Some of the brick will be able to turn around, like we did in Wharton. But I think that you're okay with your brick. I feel certain that that brick, quality of that brick will be okay, with the exception of the ones with the bad faces that we need to replace, some of the are broken and half. But the structure of the wall is, the integrity of the wall is still intact. If you get that stupid wings off of the, excuse my language, but get the, get it, use it as a functional, solid masonry wall to hold up its existing self, and not, you know, this wing that's on top of it. And even if you need a wing, you better get it somehow designed, get that wing weight off of these brick walls. But other than that, I think the stone is good. I can't determine, it sure looks like Indiana Bedford stone, but it'd be odd for it to be down there, but it's got a grainy texture to it, almost like a sandstone. And the closest color to that gray is the Lutters, which comes out of Abilene. Or there might be a Muldoon that's close to that color, but I haven't found that yet. We're looking for it right now. I know that Indiana has that color to match up, so we can, we can make a good match to the bell tower and everything else, as far as the texture, the color, everything else on the stone, that's not an issue. Everything else is, like I say, I feel like the building, the masonry on this building could be restored and fixed, and it would look like that picture what you got right there.
Yeah, so if, so if the wings were left on, because the bond didn't pass, and they kept left the wings on there, we'd have to deal with new designs for some kind of expansion joint to remove that weight from it so that it would be able to float, or not, somehow fix that, plus the millions of dollars to fix the foundation so that that foundation can stabilize independent or in addition to the work that needs to be done on this original 1894 building. And that money would then be a responsibility of the county without any contribution by THC, unless somehow that project got funded with a lower points score, because that would be closer to a 1924 building, not an 1894 building. Is that right? Did I say that correctly, that...
Yes, I would add, though, the costs for the addition to be renovated. The windows are leaking, the electrical system is 90 years old, the mechanical system is out of date. It doesn't have good egress. In other words, you only have one way of exiting, so that's against building code, and there's no fire sprinkler system. So, add that to your costs to retain the addition.
Right, right. Well, yeah, I mean, you've got one other quarter square feet to fix, just like you do with the inside.
Plus, at this point, we'd be losing, we'd be losing around six grand, of 600,000, and we'd be losing any possibility around seven grand, right? So, we're losing a million, two or three million dollars from THC if we don't move forward with this plan. Because if we do, we have to wait for the, for the bond election. But if the bond election passes, we have everything in line and set up to move for this restored courthouse. And what I think voters will understand is that it will cost more money to maintain the courthouse as it is, without help from THC, than to restore it and maintain a restored courthouse with the 5.3 million that we get from THC. And if we don't move forward with phase one as soon as possible, as soon as our courthouse is vacated, if we lose phase one, we'll lose our round six funding from THC, and we will also lose any chance for round seven in December. They won't give us any money, and then we have to get back in line. And one reason I'm fairly confident that we will receive some money from THC is we were like the fifth highest in scores for round six. And when we were fifth highest, we received 600,000 in grant, which is what we had asked for. Two of those courthouses have been completed, so it's very likely that we'll rate second or third. We could rate first if phase one is moving, because THC has never left the county just high and dry after they started the renovation. They have never not followed up with funding. And we just, they, they just wease through the last session, but if they made it through the last session with funding and with their office intact, I feel confident that they'll make it for the next at least three or four years. Because if they were going anywhere, they would have been gone this last year. So, I do, I do have the confidence, based on our point system and based on starting phase one, we have the contracts issued, that if we move forward, if you're truly concerned about doing what's best for the county for both a physically responsible viewpoint and also law and order, because this does reflect the county's opinion of law and order, and it puts importance on that building, which is that, and the county's pride. So, I just go back to how high we rate, and it is extremely likely that we will get funding, so we have to move forward with phase one. And these are knowns. We know we'll lose all that money, that's a known. Now, there are unknowns, but these are knowns. And we know we can move forward with this, and what problems are on us, we can just figure out how to overcome those. And we can get it done, other counties have done it. Fifty counties have restored their courthouses, and now, we can hear from them that they are very proud, and they always say it was worth the effort. Always say it's worth the effort.
The only thing I would add is I'm not sure, I think, Mr. Fisher, that you...
No, I'm George Hyde, a bit much for the words for me.
Oh, okay. You mentioned carving an expansion joint. I know of no way to put an expansion joint in that building.
So, we're talking about novel engineering.
When they, when they built, they can do something, but I don't think they could put a expansion. I've never seen a building knitted into that old building the way they did that, never. And I don't know how you'd do that, surely, just carrying two gaping holes through, and somehow building it back together with a... Money could do something, but it wouldn't be novel.
That would be novel engineering to get it through. I really appreciate your comments, thank you. And, Mr. Boyle.
I have two questions, one for Ms. Hunt, one for Mr. Hunt. In this restoration, all brick will be removed and cleaned and replaced with a better mortar, is that correct?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir.
Will you leave some of that old mortar in there?
Yes, sir, the same, yes, sir. We're going to dig it back.
Mr. Hunt, you stand up, I can't see you.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm the shortest person up here.
I'm sorry.
And I'm in trip there, and...
Excuse me now, please.
I can see you now.
No, sir, normally what you do in restoration is you dig out the mortar joint to a depth two times greater than the height of the mortar joint. In other words, a half inch, you're going to go back in an inch and a half, dig it out, come back and repoint it, you repoint it in three steps. You point up a half inch, you wait till it's thumbprint hard, you do another half inch, wait till it's thumbprint hard, and then you do another to the finish, and then you put the finish design of whatever it is. Some of it's got a weather joint, where the mortar joint's cut at a slight angle upward, and that way, when the water comes down and kicks out, that's, a lot of old timers did it. You don't really, you don't want to cause any, that's the concave joint that you're going to see in most of your brickwork nowadays, which is a good way, but it doesn't, it's not historically correct to do it that way. But you do the majority of the joints that way. Now, any of the damaged brick that have to be done, taken out, yes, that will be a full bed of mortar put back in when that brick is laid. Hopefully, 40, 50% of this thing, 60% is just going to be tuck pointed instead of brick replacement. We won't know until we get the plaster completely off. I think that you'll be all right around 60 to 70% will be able to be salvaged. You have to probably replace 30% of the brick in this building.
Why has it failed over the years?
It hasn't failed. It's just lime mortar. If it failed, the brick would be falling out. It's not, I mean, there's buildings in San Antonio, you know, we're working on a mission right now, 270 years old, that mortar still has that building intact. Now, the foundation is very similar here, and they're doing, on the mission, exactly what Louis's proposal here. They're going to go underneath that mission, they're going to do four-foot section, they're going to need to put a footing. Over here, 20 foot away, dig out and put a footing, and then they connect them footings in four-foot, four-foot length ways, so do that, so that you don't lose all the wall, you don't hold the whole wall up. But, yeah, the mortar hasn't failed necessarily, it's just a lime mortar. They didn't have ported cement back in the 1800s.
So, the reason all this has to be done, and all the cracks and everything, it's all because of the foundation?